I see it is 5:15 on May 3, 2022. Jane, I call the meeting to order. Jane, you want to do roll call?
Shaven.
Present.
Kroger.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Rudolph.
Here.
Councilmember Blatt is joining by Zoom. Blatt?
Can you hear us, Mr. Blatt?
I got you, President.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think everybody's seen the agenda. I don't think we've seen any. We got an updated one a day or two ago. Enough else to be changed on that. Jane or Jean, nothing, everything's good. A motion to approve the agenda.
Motion, second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
And we can state any conflicts along the way if anybody has any. We'll move on to the consent agenda. These were all approved on one motion. A is minutes of the 4/19/22 council meeting. B, claims list number 1265, the amount of $360,707.91. And C, the renewal application for Shelby County Speedway Class C liquor license Sunday service. I think the only thing I would see was that the large amount under the claims list was insurance coming out this time.
Property casualty and work comp.
Ninety percent of that, so.
That was $260,000 of it, more or less.
A few others there, but that was the majority of it, so. Any questions or anything about that? Motion for that?
Motion, second.
Motion by Shaven, second by Rudolph.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Then we will move to number three. We have an update. There's some people here that want to talk to us about Iowa Western College and Harlem Community School. Lori Stitz and Dr. Jennifer Barnett. Welcome.
Hi there, and thank you for having us back. I think when last we met, we were talking about what it was going to be, and now we've got a little updating to do. Part-time construction manager is what I feel like the last while, and lots of shipments of things coming in. I did throw some pictures on a flash drive that you see there, and so just to give you a little bit of idea, I don't know how many of you were there when Farm Table Delivery was operating in and out, but boy, when they got those coolers and freezers out, you know, it was even bigger than it was before. And so it's a great space, as you can kind of see from the picture. And we put some fencing up. We're kind of dividing out the areas, kind of so we have auto diesel, you know, trades area, and then for our SEEM program, which I'll talk about in a minute. But if you want to go ahead and advance on, that's just another open space, looking at some of the fencing and some of the equipment. So that's when the car lift got delivered, and that was quite an adventure that day. The REC guys brought it all put together, and so they set it down and said, "See ya." And so that was interesting. They actually had to kind of tear it down and drag it in the building. And so if you'll advance to the next one, you'll see it laying there. And so it wouldn't go in the garage the way it was. But what a great donation. And on the right side there, you'll see that lane. It's kind of the auto diesel lane. The car lift is going to be installed towards the back of that space. And so when you come in the garage, that'll be that first space there for those auto diesel classes that we're going to have. So they did tear into the floor and put some puddings in there, and so we're very close to having the car lift go up, which is exciting. And so we're anxious for that. If they can go on to the next one. Right when you come from the hallway kind of where the chamber office, when you come out of their space, we put a wall up right there. The building is very short in storage, and so we put a wall up. That was a wish I had, and so I'm very happy to have a little storage space. So we did put that up there. And right in front of that wall, the hope is to have some tables and chairs for seating, so when the students do need to sit down and do something, we have a place for them to sit and do. So we're going to put some tables and chairs right there. It's kind of an odd little nook in the whole space for those of you who have been in there. And so that's what that one is. And then just some examples of some of the equipment arriving, getting ready for the programs that we're going to run out of there. And so it seems like every other day, we've got contractors in and out, and deliveries being made, and it's starting to be very real as soon as our folks get in there and start to put things in place. And on one of the walls, we have some motors and controls panels going up. We've got a little nook for a couple of welding stations, and then this equipment will be dispersed to its areas once they get in and start doing that. So I'm very excited about everything taking place. So not to keep you too much time, but I do want to talk about the programs we have coming in. And so on the credit side, working very closely with Harlem High School, we've been having monthly meetings for quite some time now. And very happy with some programs that are going to be in the building next school year for the 22, 23 school year. So the first one in your hand up there, Industrial Technology. We're in our third year of this program, and it's been growing well. And so next year will be the fourth year. And so the second page kind of describes the classes that those students go through. And I'm very happy to say that tomorrow night, I will be up at the high school awarding graduation cords for 12 students who made it through the entire certificate program. So very excited to be able to do that. So 12 students made it through all the classes, and will have a certificate. And several of them do plan on going on to Iowa Western, so they will have, for those going into related programs, will have the whole semester done by the time they go.
They're looking for jobs in the area?
Pretty neat. And you have three more class periods coming up to do any recruiting, so yeah.
Yeah, a few more chances.
Exactly. And then the next one there is the auto diesel classes. And so you can see kind of the schedule for fall and spring. And then down below, it's actually kind of a two-year cycle. And so if you're a junior starting this next year, if you do fall and spring, and then do fall and spring of the next year, you will have gone through the classes you see listed there. And then page two is a description of those classes. And again, any students who want to keep going can go down to the main campus in Council Bluffs. In fact, if anybody wants to be really energetic with it, they could actually go the summer between their junior and senior year and almost have a diploma done, two classes short maybe of having a diploma done by the time they get out of high school. If you would do that your junior or senior year and go down to Council Bluffs the summer in between, you would either pick the auto track or the diesel track. So that's a very interesting and great possibility for anybody who's really motivated. So whether they want to wait and go on or be busy in the summer, that's up to the student. So they did kind of set it up in a neat way. So we're pretty excited about that. And then just to throw in there, too, we have an advanced nursing assistant certificate. We're going to have the CNA class in the building. Shayle Lyman, our nursing instructor, will be teaching those classes. So great opportunity for her to interact with the students and possibly recruit into our LPM program that we have here at the Shelby County Center. And so we do have the full LPM program that students go through, and then a lot of them continue on to the R and LPM down in Council Bluffs. So we're excited to have those nursing classes and have those opportunities for high school students. Well, open to the public as well, and I probably should say that. These are all open to the public. Yes, we're feeding in high school students, but these are open to the public. Anybody can come and take these classes, and we welcome those that want to. Great opportunities for skills that local employers need. So anybody interested in that can certainly give us a call. And then real quick, before I turn it over to Jenny, the other document you have there, it says SEEM at the top, Center for Excellence in Advanced Manufacturing. We have been busy meeting with businesses locally here. We've gone through the majority of your manufacturing type of businesses locally. And on the 13th, we're actually meeting with some more businesses from Cass County, a few out of Dennison, a couple out of Audubon, and we're presenting this program. It's a two-year cycle program. This is kind of a draft, but you'll see front and back some of the classes we'll be offering in this program. And we hope to be filling a need for our local companies whose employees need to go through this training. These, too, are open to the public, so people can sign up for these and go through this program. This is on the non-credit side of the house, and so these are not credit classes. This is non-credit. But these are classes we'll be setting up in that north space as well. And we certainly hope that our local companies can take advantage and send employees through this program. Very similar to what's happening down at our campus in Correnda. They also have the SEEM program down there, and the companies down there, like Mala and some of those, put employees through these classes all the time. So great opportunity, more on the workforce economic development side of things, to be helping out also with the north end, which was all with the intention. So any questions about any of those? Okay, I want to turn it over to...
Are you all right with us adding other businesses to this invite?
Absolutely. If you know of anybody else, you let me know, and we will tack them on, because that's a week from Friday, absolutely. We want to get the message out to as many as possible who would consider sending them in for these classes when we get this going. And getting this going will depend on our supply chain, honestly. We kind of keep messing with the whole ordering our equipment and having things come in, so we're ready to go. And so, you know, we like to say sometime in the fall, if we get kind of hung up on some of those supply chain, getting from the equipment we need, then it could be January, but we'll just see how those things go. They're constantly ordering and trying to get things in, but anybody who listens to the news knows what kind of a problem that can be. So some of it's coming in, and some of it kind of on hold. So we'll see how that all works out.
The schedule for the SEEM classes, is that, how does that generally work, or still to be determined?
So what we're talking about, and that's what we're talking to the companies about, is you know, what works for you guys? What do you see on here? What, you know, do these apply? Do you need other ones? And that's why we're having these meetings, is you want to make sure that we're providing, you know, the things that they need. Right now, the talk is like Tuesday and Thursday, late afternoon, so like 3:30 to 6:30, four to seven, Tuesday, Thursday, probably like in 10-week chunks. So you take two classes in a 10-week period, and two classes, and you know, and cycle through. Summer's off because they find they don't get good attendance when they try to have these in the summer, you know, which is a real thing. And so by the time you cycle through, it's about a two-year program. And it can be a pick or choose employer. Some of them will look at this, and maybe they only need two or three, and other employers might look at it and need all 10. This is subject to change based on these conversations that we're having with these companies. And so that's all the things we're trying to work out right now. So yes, if anybody knows of any companies who you think would have need, you know, with these sort of classes, please just let us know, and we will certainly invite them. And if they can't come that Friday, I can meet with them anytime, so.
Are any of these eligible for like a 260F?
Absolutely. So our Economic Development Department of the college, Harlan Purdue, works with all these companies, and it's very possible that they will get 260E, 260F reimbursement for putting their employees through the training. So what a wonderful opportunity for the companies. And you guys have, I think, done some of that. And so it's a great, great benefit to the companies who want to participate. So thank you for bringing that up, and...
Did you say this is your third year?
Third year, but that's...
For the industrial tech?
Yeah.
Have your numbers gone up every year?
Yeah, so six to eight to 12. Yep. Now, we are going to, and we knew this was going to happen, when you bring in auto diesel, and Jenny's going to talk about welding here in just a second, when you start to diversify the possibilities, you know, your numbers are gonna... It's like, you know, we want to be careful about bringing in too many things, because they're like, "How about plumbing and how about construction?" Well, when you start to do that, and, you know, we're pulling from Alcorn of Oka and Harlan, hopefully, you know, you bring too many in, and then you've got four in this and four in, you know, and so you got to be a little careful. So we do expect our industrial tech numbers to go down, because we've got probably nine to 12 kids interested in our auto diesel now. So, and then there's welding. So good problem to have, but expect it, definitely.
Yeah, I know my youngest son went through this last year and enjoyed it, and he didn't get, didn't talk to Dr. Kenny in time, or Dr. Kenny didn't talk to him in time, because he headed east on you. But he was very impressed with Iowa Western that day they went down. That whole group went down and took a tour and all that kind of stuff.
That was our COVID pickup year, where we didn't give them the tour in the fall. We had to wait till spring. By then, some of them had decided, darn it, yeah.
And I know just as a parent, to sit and watch someone like him, you know, I can tell he wasn't going to be a four-year school, I mean, where he wanted to go, but it was going to be something like this or whatever. And it was a great, you know, kind of a feeder for him to get a taste of, you know, kind of college, you know. And it was successful. You know, it wasn't stressful in his life. He seems to think it was, but it didn't, he survived, he did fine. But so, and I think I told you, I appreciate what you guys did, because he kind of lit a fire in him kind of where he wanted to go, and he went to DMAC, you know, that's okay. And he's enjoying that, too. And I, to be honest, I tell lots of kids in my business, I see lots of people, and I tell a lot of students, high school kids, I said, you know, every college, four-year colleges, not to downplay that, but that's not for everybody. I went there, but I mean, I've got five kids, and all five of my kids should not have gone to a four-year school. And these type of programs are, you can get, like if you get a degree within two hours or whatever it is, classes, by being in high school and not have a lot of debt when you graduate, and get a job, and you're going to make a lot of money, you're not paying student loans for 20 years for the rest of your life, basically, that's a good way to go. I know it's hard to convince them to do that, but kudos to you guys for what you're doing. I know that's changed in the last 10 years, how Iowa Western's in the D-backs in the world, how they are looked at, and that's a good thing.
It used to be university, 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 and finally, they're coming around and thinking more about the trades, and the fact they can go through these programs and that all be free. And that's something we try and tell the high schools, too, is, you know, if you would set, your students that want to go into nursing, if you set them up with the correct classes their junior and senior year, they're going to have all their prep nursing classes taken care of and paid for, and they can graduate in May and go right into our LPM program in August. So with enough coordination and, you know, meeting with the students and making sure they do it right, there's great possibilities for these classes that they get paid for, you know, that are completely free. So thank you for saying that, but yes, that is a benefit. So I'll let Jenny talk a little bit about welding and some of the collaboration we've had going on.
Well, just coming here and being able to collaborate with Iowa Western has been, it's been great. We've met monthly, like she said. I would just put a, I want to appreciate, I want to say that we really appreciate Conductix, as they gave quite a bit of money to the foundation for our welding program. So upwards of around $40,000, which was great. So they, and they've also given us equipment, like we kind of get the hand-me-downs, which are okay, because they're super cool for our kids, because they're getting the state-of-the-art, and they're still state-of-the-art in our classrooms. So we really appreciate that. And then Iowa Western found us a certified welder, who now our students who are taking that program will be able to be certified in, get a certificate in welding. Also, with Iowa Western, we do have kit, so students that do want to go to a four-year school, we also have many other college classes they can take for free, college English and college public speaking, and many different things where it all goes through Iowa Western. But those are all classes, too, that can transfer to many other places, whether it's a junior college or a four-year university. So we really do appreciate Iowa Western very much. And I also want to say, Troy, that we also are getting a new program called IJAG, so Iowa Jobs for America's Graduates. And we will have a full-time teacher, and part of her job is to have a, oh, probably 40 to 50 students that could be on anywhere a list of an at-risk qualifier. And what her job is, is to help them with job skills, and then the other half of her day will be reaching out to community members and to businesses to attach, "If my interests are welding and something else, how can I attach to a Conductix or to a Monogram Needs or to whatever?" So we're excited to have that program, too, and that's through the Department of Ed and the Department of Labor. So that's a really good partnership. But if that works out really well and we get that successful, we want to have a couple more students, or more teachers with that as well, and we'll work with TUD, TUD, too. So, and as Lori said, as we started gathering numbers, because we have more opportunities for the kids, we just have to build the interests and not spread them all apart. So the other thing we need to do is add some more things, maybe on the gender, the female side, say, because a lot of times, we have a lot of boys, so how can we help girls get interested in? And I do think we did have a couple of girls that were in our welding classes, so some other opportunities for them if they want to go. They do have the nursing route, and then we're also looking into the introduction to teaching route, and we're, we are struggling right now to find paraprofessionals to work for us. So we have some plans to have our students who are interested in becoming teachers and possibly being hired as a paraprofessional their senior year and working with them with Iowa Western to figure out how we can get some classes under their belt as well. The other big change I feel like that we've done this year is, it used to only be seniors that were allowed to take Iowa Western classes, and we bumped that down to juniors and seniors, which gives them much more opportunity, I think. Do you have any questions?
I love the opportunities we provide the kids, right? Like I said, it's just not, just not the four-year or the college route, per se. You're saying here, here's an opportunity, because they may not want to go down that route, but have an interest in trades or other things, and trying to fit it within their community. And also, I think our great community support from a lot, a variety of people, businesses, individuals, that help support the growing needs or growing dreams, per se, right? And I think that's another thing that is great about our community, great support.
That is one thing. We also have started something called a Portrait of a Graduate. So we had about 40 to 50 community members, business members, parents, teachers, and we finished up last night with seven different competencies, we're going to call them, but kind of seven things we want our students to eventually graduate with and have from kindergarten on through 12th grade. And just the support that I felt, just being new and not knowing anyone, but there were 40 people every single month that came to that, and it was a big commitment. And just to piggyback on what you said, Troy, I mean, it was, there was, there's great just participation and help for that.
I like the diversification, but participation, by the way, in that project, young, old. I really loved that, and it was interesting. By the way, Greg volunteered to present that to the city council last night, so.
He did?
Yes, he did.
All right.
You raised his hand.
You may not have heard that on Zoom.
I'm sure that's Shaven.
Thank you. I want to say thank you, too, to Todd Chamber and his gals. You know, lots of great help as we've gone through all this, and, you know, we're doing rekeying doors and, you know, making changes and everything, and they've been a great help and with everything that we've done so far. So thank you to the Chamber office.
Well, you bet. It's going to be, it really is going to be a great partnership as these programs continue to grow. And for us, I mean, again, we're looking for those, you know, attraction pieces, and this is going to be a really big attraction piece to, not only for families, but for, you know, other small businesses to say, "If I can come in and establish myself in Shelby County, and I've got a pipeline of employees who may be available to me," that'll be, that'll be great.
I'll just make one last to bring in full circle and appreciate the update. And in terms of appreciation back to you as councilmembers, as we were evaluating the last 18 months or so, as to how to best leverage this space, which was, you know, a city-owned space, and just, you know, through your participation, collaboration, and support is to, you know, what made the transaction allowable here at the end of the year, and to see where we're at now, it's fantastic. But appreciate your support, and as we've navigated that, those waters to make it happen. So I think it's just a great community solution, and look forward to the years to come. So thanks again to you.
Yeah, thanks for coming and giving us the update. Those are always very nice to hear the positive updates that we all kind of thought it was going to happen, but to hear that it's happening, that's a great thing. So thank you, guys, for coming tonight. Moving on to other business. Under A, review the bids for the sale of the asphalt millings, the pile of treasure out there, it sounds like. So Jean, you want to, are we going to review all three, or does one get it? I mean, do all three get a piece of this?
Well, I'll make a recommendation based upon what took place. Quick refresher, we had a surplus, a public surplus of our millings. And as we introduced last time, you know, it looked as a black and white picture, but that's down in our waste area or supply area. And there, we had three sealed bids, and in this case, we weren't looking for low bid, we were looking for high bid, right? So Hennington Construction, at $10 a ton, performance grading at five and a quarter a ton, mining construction at $5 a ton, and we had asked a bid up to 5,000 ton. And Hennington offered $10 a ton for all 5,000. The recommendation would be to coordinate with Hennington to remove that pile and coordinate that with our public workers.
How much do we think is in the pile? Do we know? Have an idea?
Our calculations and estimates were between 6,500 and 7,500 ton. And I'll provide some updates in my administrative report, the street work this year. And we're taking the milling once again, and so we will have a supply. So we won't, even if they, you know, we'll, Western may start, Western engineering with this year, street work may start in the next few weeks, which is a bit sooner than normal. So we'll identify another area. If we have two supply piles down there, we'll make that work. But our recommendation is is to award this standing construction, then we'll coordinate their removal.
Anybody have any questions for that? A motion for that?
Motion.
Motion by Peterson, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
That's a good positive. Like I say, we're used to getting low bid, hoping to get rid of it, and hope it goes away. It's nice to have a little bit higher of a bid or something. Item B, Resolution Number 2492, approving the contract and performance and maintenance bond for city hall parking lot improvements.
We had actually approved this last meeting, but this is the signed contract and performance and maintenance bond. The form of contract was approved previously as well with the bid documents. So this simply needs your action for me to execute the contract, which will then play in, I guess, I'll provide another update with the next item underneath this. Yes, they're ready to go as soon as we get this signed, and, but then I'll introduce this next item following this. But we simply need to execute this to get the contracts signed.
Is there a motion for this? Resolution 2492.
Motion.
Motion by Rudolph.
Second.
Second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Then we'll move on to review the change order for city parking lot improvements from 10-point construction in an amount of $65,808.75.
We, over the past two years, as we've been working towards this parking lot replacement, have been evaluating not only budgeting this year and next fiscal year for funding, but also we're evaluating surface options and also trying to be most economical. In working with our engineer, we believe that we were going to need to do a combined surface of replacing the exterior areas that were most damaged, and then do an asphalt overlay on the interior, fully realizing that long-term pavement lifecycle, the best long-term solution is full concrete. Yet, the most efficient was to do part concrete, part asphalt. We'd estimated that initial combined project, we'd budgeted up to $95,000. And as we approved all the bids, in working with 10-point, they offered, and we talked with them, seeing their initial competitive number, is they provided a change order on changing out asphalt from Western to full pavement, full concrete, and that's what this change order represents. So all that being said, we originally budgeted $95,000 for a parking lot replacement, and to make it all concrete and with all engineering would be, would be $114,000, which would be $19,000 over. Yet, if you look back to item A on this agenda, we just approved $50,000 worth of income for millings. And that would make this change order, fully recommend, we've talked with all the partners, including even Western, who's going to do the asphalt overlay, and said, "Your best long-term solution," which, again, we recognized that from the offset. What questions do you have? I've updated you with some of my written reports, but I'm going to provide this to you again to the public. And once again, they could start, we're assuming approval here, we're talking with the engineer and contractor later tonight, and brought the first thing in the morning, monitoring weather.
Feasible. It seems more logical and it's appropriate, like you said, offsetting with the other revenue, so it's not really a burden to our budget.
I move to approve the change order as requested.
Motion by Kroger, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good project to have done.
Yeah, a piece of minor... Yeah, a piece of minor disruption. We've got some designated alternate parking areas for a week or two for those that use the parking lot. We definitely will make it work. A little bit of short-term pain for a wonderful long-term gain that has been needed for quite some time.
Moving on to Resolution Number 2493, approving 2022-2026 union contract and signed hiring and retention memorandum of understanding. That's a lot of words. Took a lot of work, too, I know, so.
Provide summary of this. Let me just pull up which was in your packets. We had started negotiations back in November, really kicked off in December due to some, excuse me, in January due to some health and coordination issues. We had a tentative agreement reached the first week in February. And then, as in many things, as you start to maybe peek under the covers a little bit more, well, how come this was always this way? What we, with the memorandum of understanding, which I'll allude to in just a moment, it allowed to permit us to provide some clarification or include language that had been practiced for some time. So memorialize that in writing. But the two main highlights, or a couple of main highlights, have reached a four-year agreement up until 2026. Two main components are on insurance and wages. And the first two years of the contract, we did this similarly in 2018, in which years one and two, the employee contribution towards premium will go up 1% each year, which you can see here. So single, presently, we're at 8% on a single contribution. It would go to 9% the next fiscal year and 10% the next fiscal year, and then remain there at 10% for the final two years. On family, we're currently at 10%. It'll go to 11% the next fiscal year and 12% the year after that. And we remain that way for the final two years. So the alternative to that, in our simple math, would be the employer pays 90% of single premium, 88% after year two of the family premium. We've discussed this without planning sessions, just for yourselves, again, in the public, in terms of municipalities and government entities. We're, I'd say, maybe middle of the pack in terms of that employer employee contribution. There are still some municipalities out there that provide 100% employee premium paid, some 80/20. You know, from our information that we share with you, and we continue to evaluate, this is, you know, right in line with what others in the public space do. And so that's the insurance change. Then on the wages, it took a hybrid approach. So over the four years, and we reviewed this through our negotiations with you, that it's a 1.5% cost of living each year and a 1.5% merit, assuming a successful performance evaluation. That's, those evaluations are completed in December each year. In addition, in recognizing the economic situation and inflation, we introduced what is a COLA, or cost of living adjustment, for every six months during years one and two, recognizing the financial, or the additional burdens on inflation and how it's impacting our households and such. So each year, or every six months, a 1.5% lump sum COLA payment. And then the last six months, that goes to 1%. It was a hybrid modified approach. And after everyone evaluated, and the pros and cons, really we met a very balanced approach there. And the other item that this accomplished is that knowing that they'll, never knowing, can't predict the future 100%, certainly not the economy, yet at some point there'll be a correction. And in terms of wages, you know, our wages are competitive at this time, yet each time that you compound, add a compounding effect, just like compound interest, to that wage, that's in perpetuity. So that was recognizing, you know, some point this would be temporary, we just don't know how long, and yet not adding a compounding effect on the wage side. Number three, there was the memorandum of understanding. And this is where we more or less memorialized and/or clarified, you know, item three there is upon successful police academy graduation, let's put it in writing, that it gets the $1.50 bump. There were some, it wasn't clear in the past, items four and five, as to when, with a new employee, do they or don't they get cost of living? Same with that floating holiday. Let's put that in writing so that practice can be recognized. So that's what the memorandum of understanding. And the term retention was in there. And that's simply recognizing the ability to attract and retain employees with these changes. And then the last item was, well, this is also, this was simply updating the low, minimum maximum, which is updated with every contract. So that gets appended to the contract, and that's by job title. And then the last item, which also is, it's called a years of service chart, and this applies for, in hiring. Best way to demonstrate this is we've had three recent new hires in which, in working with the union, we applied this principle to these new hires. For example, we've had a new police officer that joined us with three years already certified experience. And recognizing that three years of experience on this chart allowed us to attract that candidate. Also, a 15-year candidate that's recently joined us, a 15-year experienced police officer, and as well as the wastewater plant, in which someone had eight, 17 years, 18 years of mechanical experience, in which we were able to recognize that, an equivalent of six or seven years on this chart, that otherwise we wouldn't have been able to attract. So that's what that years of service chart recognizes. Questions? Again, this has been agreed to and signed by the union. Those are the highlights. And happy to offer any additional final comments from you or additional clarifications you have. Appreciate your support through this as well.
Appreciate that out of the box, thinking for both sides.
Yeah, because I know there was a little negotiating going on there. So that's what this is about. So, okay, is there a motion for Resolution 2493?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Peterson.
Roll call Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Item number D is authorize publication and set a public hearing date of May 17, 2022, fiscal year 2122 budget amendment. Is that a Jane item, I'm guessing?
Yeah. Gene, can you put that up?
Yes, ma'am.
Please. It's kind of small, but.
Get the magnifiers out.
So the middle column, so the left column is what was certified, and the middle is what we're amending, proposing to amend. The second column would be the total of the certified plus the proposed amendment. So if you start at the top is revenues. So the first one you come to is under other city taxes. There's 140,000 there, and that is due to local option sales tax, in which we have received more revenue than which was budgeted for, which is a good thing. And so that's, that's what that's all about. The next line where there's a number of 418,000, that's intergovernmental. And that has that large ARPA payment, that 356,000. And it also includes some other grants that have been given to different departments. And that makes up the intergovernmental area. Charges for service, that is actually increases for the HMU for their, they've done an amendment, increased their both revenues and expenses. And so this reflects partly them and partly us for things like increased fuel sales at our airport. So we've, we've had to purchase more fuel, which we'll see in the expenses, but we've also sold more fuel. So it's reflected in the revenues. If you go down to the miscellaneous, that one covers things like the sale of our 928 cat loader. And also some insurance payments for lightning damage, any kind of things like that. That's what that would fall under. So that total is what consists of our miscellaneous. Then the transfer in, that is money that was received, COVID money that was received by the airport. One of them was CHRISA money, and one was the ACRGP. And so those were brought into specific accounts for those grants. And then they will be transferred in to the general fund, to the airport account in which to spend. So that's got to be noted anytime you do that transfer. And that's also noted on the expense side. So the total for the revenues, including the HMU amendments, $1,671. And then if you go to the second half with the expenses.
Well, the millings are going to be in next year, 2023? They're going to be after the cutoff for the end of the year?
No, we're bringing them in here.
So that's in one of those numbers?
Yes, yes. That is.
Is that miscellaneous?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes, sorry. I didn't list all of them. There's about twelve of them.
Okay.
That, but that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. And expenses, so the total of expenses is 1,599,600. And so if you want to break that down, one of the, one of the expenses for public safety is like our canine dog that we purchased. And, and the fire truck, we made some change orders and added a few things. So that includes that there. Public works, that's addition to the cat loader that we purchased. And also some other street things that we, that we're doing. Culture and recreation, that's our library, our vet center, our Turks, things like that. So additional expenses that we're, that we're expending there. Capital projects, those are some of the projects that we're doing that we didn't budget for in the, in the beginning. And some of those are COVID-related also. The transfer out, that 45,000, that's reflected, as I said before, from the transfer, you have to transfer out, you have to transfer in. So they have to balance. So that's where that came from. It's that ACRGP and the CHRISA money for the COVID-19 relief. The excess revenue, 72,308, which is good news that we're coming out ahead of our additional expenses. So we do have additional revenues, but we also have additional expenses. Our revenues are more, which is always a good thing to have.
And a lot of that, as you can see, is in the narrative or explanation, which will be published as well.
Yeah.
In the bottom section of the notice.
That is required by the state, just to have some explanation of changes. They don't have room to list every single thing. So we would list the major, some of the major things that, and the sale of excess millings is listed on there. It's really tiny. It's hard to see, but.
Oh, yeah, down there in the bottom.
Sale of excess millings.
Any other, any other questions?
This will be published next week.
Yes, it'll be published, it'll be in the Friday's paper. And then the public hearing will be held on the 17th. And then the council can vote to approve this or not approve it. Does have to be filed with the state by the 31st of May, so.
Any questions about that? Mr. Blatt, you still awake?
We're still here.
Is there a motion to set that public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Blatt from far.
He got caught sleeping.
Roll call Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Moving on to E, review the airport manager contract.
This is for the airport manager, Scott Pigsley. The airport commission reviewed this at their last meeting. Their, the review was done in December, and post-review, as it was going into budget time, it was presented to you in the airport budget, a recommended increase from the current 54,000 to 55,500. That's just approximately a 2.7% increase. Scott started with the airport, we, two years, excuse me, 24 months ago this month. And this increase would take place July 1st, which, again, was approved by you in the budget. And so it'd be 27 months since he had taken the position, done a very solid job. And again, this was recommended by the commission, and you had approved that as well. But this solidifies the updated agreement, which requires the insurance and other performance in the contract, which our attorney has looked at as well. Any questions? Which, again, it was in, in your packet as well.
He and the commission members have done a phenomenal job out there. Appreciate them.
I will, as you mentioned that, Sharon, tentatively planning sometime in June, that the commission and the manager would like to invite, or will be inviting you as elected officials, as well as, as well as the county board of supervisors, out to just do a show and tell at the airport, you know, current conditions, show off some of the improvements and additional needs. There, we'll be setting that date and try to make it a date where most of you can attend. It certainly is a, one of those things, you drive by as you're going down 59, and know that there's maybe sometimes activity there, but there's, it's definite, an impact for, for our county and the region. So you can expect that forthcoming.
Is there a motion to approve the contract?
Motion.
Motion by Peterson, second by Shaven.
Roll call Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
F is review the permit, street closing for neighborhood block party from Daras Swenson.
I believe this is the fourth year that this has come before council. So this is a neighborhood off of 19th Street, had not had issues in the past. And so it's from 19th down to Victoria. Great to see neighbors get together and socialize. And this allows the formality be taken, also as notification to EMA and public safety that that street will be closed for that time.
Am I in motion for that one?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Rudolph.
Roll call Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Review the permit for the parade for Shelby County Fair. I guess, is that the same route? Have they changed their route, have they?
It is the same route.
Can't have it today. It was blocked off down there, but hopefully done by July.
Should be done by July. Be July 14, Thursday, Thursday in July. And it's kind of tough to see. It didn't come well. yeah, it's kind of tough to see, uh, didn't come well. Essentially coming up Broadway, up Sixth, and back down, excuse me, up Seventh and back down Sixth, and then turning on Cyclone.
He's trying to mix it up for you, Jay.
I think it was down Fifth. I think.
It come up Seventh, go down...
Come up Seventh, go down Fifth, I don't think they'll back down Sixth.
Well, two blocks.
Yeah, they go by the bank or...
I'm another block off. I was just saying, just saying if you're...
You get rolled down, you turn at the first office.
Yeah. Hope your vehicle makes it all the way around. Motion for that one?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
City administrative report.
First and foremost, uh, this week is, uh, musical clerks week, as well as public service recognition week. Uh, I know there's some other, uh, entities that are recognizing, I know, their employees, but, uh, these are core to what we deliver, uh, to our citizens, and extremely proud of, uh, the team we have here at the city. So, we've got it on Facebook, and just want to give it a shout out to all of our team members and, uh, for, for delivering day in and day out with that extra one degree that, uh, we strive for. So, wanted to kick off with that. The, uh, swimming pool started filling yesterday, I didn't get an update today as to, um, had a little bit of help from other nature, but, um, it, it is being filled. And once again, the primary source for that is due to maintenance on one of the water towers, coordinated with the water department, that, uh, the primary supply for the filling of the pool is, uh, coming from a, a water tower that had to be drained anyway. So, good coordination effort there. Doesn't quite seem like swimming weather right now, but at some point, it will stop being damp and cool and wet, and probably be hot and humid, and, um, have seen more lifeguard applications, yet, uh, just to plug once again, great summer outdoor employment, and, uh, so interested in lifeguarding, stop in City Hall. Um, check out the website, I believe, as well, and we can get you set up there. Uh, indicated before that, uh, Western Engineering had, uh, contacted us that for our, uh, street work that we had approved back in, uh, February, that, uh, will likely start sooner, uh, yet with the past few days of rain, I know their schedules constantly get, uh, back and forth, but it could be as early as the sixteenth. And as we sharpen the pencil, um, the blue areas, it's really concentrated to sixteen blocks in two primary areas. Um, here from, uh, on Lincoln, from Morse all the way out to Highway Fifty-Nine, that's a stretch that's going to be a wonderful overlay. And then on Seventh Street, from Broadway all the way up to, uh, Hill, we have an alternate, um, just based upon, again, as we're, if, if we see soft spots, have the core out, we always want to provide some excess, but our alternate would be if we have excess yet, we would do Morning View, which is off Twelve Street going into Bus Auditorium. Uh, that would be on our alternate. And, uh, we are still doing the two patch areas, um, at the bottom of Victoria, and then up at the Fourth and Cyclone. Uh, more communication coming on that, but, uh, again, these contracts and numbers are already, you know, we bit this out, but want to give an, give an update on that project. Uh, the sanitary sewer for the courthouse, um, so Seventh Street is closed down. Uh, we put on a lot of public communication, and we have, that street is closed. They, I believe, got most of it trenched out today. And, uh, again, weather permitting, possibly could be done by Friday, but I'm not going to hold my breath with the rain projected for Thursday. And, uh, stay posted on social media, and we'll provide updates if that gets extended through the weekend. And, I think I had one other show and tell here, uh, yes. Hats off and appreciation to our Plant Iowa and Shelby County Plant Iowa that coordinates with, uh, the city of Harlan as well. Uh, they had their work night, uh, a week ago Monday, and kudos to our street superintendent, he's, he's continued to be involved with that group. And then you should, I think everyone has seen some recent, recent communication that there are, uh, trees being made available for sale that Plant Iowa planted in two thousand nine and two thousand eleven, and those seedlings are now eight to fifteen feet tall and, uh, are being made available. I think it's thirty-five dollars, um, for being delivered in town. And they're all oak trees, so reach out to the Plant Iowa contact who's Janet Buman, that was in the paper, or contact City Hall, we can get you directed. Great to see this, you know, continued commit, commitment of, uh, trees in Harlan and Shelby County, and a, and a great volunteer group there. And then, uh, lastly, just want to give some encouragement to, uh, Mayor Christensen and get him prepped for his, uh, his debut, uh, shoot and interview with, uh, he's going to be recorded to get, uh, his, uh, picture and recording for, uh, main page of the website to...
If I don't make it...
I think that recording, your debut is this week. The lineup outside for signatures. So, we got plenty of support, and do a great job there.
Going to lose a lot of sleep tonight on that.
And essentially updating our, the welcome video that exists on the, uh, city of Harlan main web, uh, on the main page of the website. And we'll bring that up to date, get it current, so look forward to you doing that, Mayor. Any questions or comments for me?
Question on the, our, um, pool filling alternative? Do we have any updates to our appeal?
Uh, we have not heard any response back yet from, uh, Iowa Department of Public Health, so...
Just curious.
Yeah, no updates.
They had time to catch up to you.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
So, yeah, yeah, hopefully a lot of snow by the time heats up and starts evaporating and all that.
Uh, yes, with the HMU board's, uh, support, again, uh, we, uh, the public pool is allowed to operate with our replenished water in a tier one. We continue to be in a water watch. The cooler weather and some precipitation is certainly helping the cause this early in the season, which would hopefully delay, I don't think will totally mitigate a tier one. Yet, even if we go to tier one, we still have authority from, uh, the HMU board for our community to refill with the potable water, only until we go to tier two, where we either need to have an alternative or shut the pool down. I don't like saying those words, but that is the alternative there.
That's it? Blatt, you're still on? You're not here, and it's a short and sweet.
I'm here.
Nothing else, unless you have other questions, a lot, lot of activity going on.
Don't hold the pictures next time.
Thank you, Gene. Um, under my report, I guess, I'll tie it into what Gene just said. The, uh, May is mental health awareness, and I can't, I don't want to make light of it, you know, strain and stress of, uh, getting ready for my big debut tomorrow is, uh, I won't come close to a lot of things that, that this entails, but I do want to read through this, this proclamation. Um, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. Um, there's a connection between good mental health and, and just being healthy. Mental illnesses are real and prevalent in our county regardless of, you know, socioeconomic boundaries, you know, who you are, where you live, what you do. Stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who benefit, who would benefit from mental health services from, from asking for help or seeking help. Education's an effective way to reduce the stigma of mental health. We encourage our citizens to help, get help for mental illnesses, understand the important to treat is any other illness such as diabetes or heart disease. Um, I am a health, heart disease awardee as of a month ago. You know, and that does add to my mental health. Um, a month ago, I had no concerns with my medicines or anything, and now I do. Um, so I do, so that does coordinate with what goes on in our lives. Um, mental health is, is very important. Um, people with mental illnesses recover if given the necessary services and supports in our communities. People with mental illnesses make important contributions to our families, our workplaces, our schools, our communities. Good mental health is crucial to well billing, well-being and economic viability of our families, communities, schools, and our businesses. Greater public awareness about mental illness can change negative attitudes, behaviors toward people with mental illnesses. Um, I am Mayor Jay Christensen, on behalf of Harlan, Iowa. Due hereby proclaim the month of May as Make It Okay Month. As a mayor, I also call upon Harlan citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, schools, to recommit to our community, to increasing awareness, understanding of mental health, reducing stigma, discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services to all people with mental illnesses. Um, I don't know if we see as much of that as you might see in a, my sister lives in New York City, and, and I don't know if you could go anywhere in New York City and not see, you know, what they see. In Harlan, you may not see it as much, but it's there. Um, so I, I don't want to make light of this, and I, Katie, I think Sanquist, I think, is the lady, uh, that gave this to me, and, um, now I'm new at this job, so I didn't, uh, she wanted a quote, but I didn't give her a quote, and I apologize for that, but I do want to make this, that I do take this serious. This is something that, uh, I, I mean, we're coming out of a COVID time in our lives, where mental health is, uh, we've all been a little bit strained, I would say. So, uh, um, kudos to those people that, that, that help people that really need the help, and hopefully people reach out. Um, on a lighter note, uh, my next one would be, we need to discuss, I, with council, they, uh, have been many people looking at Ward One for the, the seat, the seat that I sat in. They looked and saw who was there, and they're, but they weeded it down to two. And, uh, we need to make some time to talk to these folks and discuss with them why they want to do it, and kind of figure out a when and a where, I mean, where would be here, but the when. We're looking at next week, and Gina just told us something about graduation. Oops. We're kind of thinking, we, as me, Gene, Jane, whatever, Wednesday or Thursday of next week, to get some time to get together as a group, and then put it out to these two candidates to maybe talk with them about the position and make some decisions. So, I don't know what you guys' calendars are, if you can make a decision tonight, but that would be, I'm, I'm thinking after hours, an hour, you know, to meet with them, maybe a half hour for each one of the candidates, to give them some time to, uh, have questions, I'm sure, or just to visit with them about why they want to do it, and the background and that kind of stuff. So, you guys can look at your schedules. Wednesday would be better for you, Gina?
I can call in Wednesday night.
You can do Wednesday night?
On the road, if that's all right with you guys.
How about you guys? Wednesday's okay, like a, like a five o'clock? Mr. Blatt, are you thawed out enough to, to respond?
Wednesday, please, sir.
Wednesday's okay?
Sharon says five fifteen.
Five fifteen? We can do it five thirty, too, huh? That's okay.
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen? So then I guess we can maybe, have you guys maybe reach out to the candidates, people that have signed on the dotted line, to see if that works for them, and then let us know if that'll work.
Can you have a forum?
So, a couple of items related to that.
Um, go ahead.
Kind of follow up on what Troy just inquired about, as we've previously discussed, this would be, it's a work session, it would be posted as a public meeting. Um, so it's, uh, qual, it would be a work session as a public meeting, uh, no action being taken. What it has previously been published is that your intention is to make an appointment at the May seventeenth meeting, uh, from, you know, what, what you learn, what your formal action would take place on the seventeenth. The public notice for the open position, uh, actually closes May ninth, which would be next Monday. Uh, up to this point, there have been two interested candidates. As Jay alluded to, it's, you know, him vacating the seat, there's a lot of people that want his, uh, his chair, but in all sincerity, it's great to have a couple of people interested. I think it's, from my point, it's wonderful for what, you know, you've done as a team, and so... But the actual closing is next Monday, the ninth, so there could be additional.
Okay.
Yet, getting that on the calendar would help facilitate that.
So, we probably wouldn't know until after Monday exactly if there's more than two, time-wise, what, what we might be doing.
There's, yeah, up to how you want to facilitate that session, too, so you certainly can guide that how you want in terms of...
Ignore my comment, I was thinking tomorrow. Sorry.
You're a week off.
Oh, yeah. I'm awake over here.
So, you're a week off, can you still do it next week?
I can do it next week. Well, next week has to be in the evening on the drive, so...
It'd be Wednesday, May eleventh to five fifteen, you're targeting.
Okay. Here in Chamber. And if you have to zoom in or call in, we'll do that, too. Okay. Okay, that's all I've got for my chair. Todd Valine, Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry.
Good evening. Uh, a couple of items real quick. Uh, as Gene mentioned, there are other appreciation things taking place this week. Uh, those include, uh, National Teacher Appreciation Week, and also our National Correctional Officer and Employee Appreciation Week. So, you take all these appreciation weeks that we have this week, take graduations, sure there's some anniversaries out there, some birthdays, other things, and remember it's also National Small Business Week. So, as you buy things to thank all of these people, please shop local and support local. Um, we were able to have our Fun China luncheon event, it went off really, really well on administrative assistance, Jay. Got a lot of very positive comments, we had fourteen decorated tables, they looked great. Uh, we actually did come up with a traveling trophy as we reintroduced this event. And so, that is currently sitting at Molded Products, because they were voted the best decorated table, and so we'll get to display that for a year, and, uh, then we'll have it ready for next year. We will be having a candidate forum here in May, uh, for both the Shelby County Supervisor and Shelby County Treasurer, uh, positions, we have multiple candidates for both. We're targeting the week of May twenty-third, I just haven't heard from a couple of the candidates yet on the day that they would prefer. There'll probably be a six-thirty to seven-thirty event, with the first half an hour being on the treasurer, uh, position, and the second half hour being on the supervisor position. And then finally, uh, Friday, May twentieth, out at Shelby County Golf Course, starting at five thirty, will be the Chamber Golf Outings, so get your golf team together, give us a call, and we'll, we'll get you on, uh, on the list. Seven five five, two oh four, it's going to be fifty dollars per player, two hundred dollars per team, and, uh, it's one of our fundraisers for the year, so we're looking forward to it, should be a lot of fun. And that's kind of it from the Chamber for tonight.
Cool.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks.
And I don't have anything from Ken tonight, he's not on.
Yeah, he indicated was not going to be...
Not good here, Ken.
He might be doing that a little while ago.
Any comments from the public? No? With that, we adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody.